Ms. Tolan?
Yes, Dr. Anderson.
I am ready to start.
Super.
Do we need? Do we need one more board person to log in or no?
I think we are good. One, two, three, four, five, six. No, we do need one more. We don't have quorum yet.
Oh, I think we're okay. According to our clerk.
Oh, okay.
I know there are several other board members that are planning to join us, so I think we'll be okay.
Actually, Ms. Tolan, you should wait for a quorum and I see Mr. Fresh is joining.
Mr. First. Okay.
Okay, so he makes up. Just ensure that you can hear everybody's microphone and.
Hello.
Okay, so you want me to run down the list of board members to hear their microphone?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And your camera is not on. I'm not sure if you're aware of that.
I am. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Karen Corbett Sanders. Can you test your microphone? No. Mr. Fresh?
Good evening.
Ms. Sizmore Hyder?
Good evening, everybody.
Dr. Anderson, I heard you. Ms. Makarsky?
Good evening, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Derna Kofax.
Hello, everyone.
Ms. Karen Corbett Sanders?
Good evening. Looking forward to hearing from everybody tonight.
Thank you. And thank you to several members of the leadership team that are with us here as well.
Ms. Tolan, I'm here. You called on me. Apologies.
Thank you, Ms. Amish. Thank you, Ms. Amish. So hello and welcome to our public hearing on our McLean Langley High School boundary adjustments. On behalf of the entire school board, I would like to thank you for taking your time this evening to share your thoughts with us. And I would like to again thank the leadership team members that are with us this evening, including Dr. Braybrand. This hearing is being livestreamed at fcps.edu/tv/CH99. We have 31 speakers who will address the board at this public hearing. Each speaker is allotted three minutes and we ask that you stay within that time limit. The timer will start when you begin to speak and the timer will set at the conclusion of your three minutes. A reminder that tonight's public hearing is being held to hear comments on the McLean Langley High School boundary change only. Please keep your remarks to only this topic. When your name is called, please unmute your microphone and begin speaking. Please mute your microphone at the end of your three minutes. Our clerk, Ms. Mulberg, will call our speakers so that I can be taking full notes on everything that is being said this evening. Thank you, Ms. Mulberg, for helping us out. Please call our first speaker.
Thank you. Our first speaker is Ava Carter. Ava Carter?
Hi, thank you. So I am a resident of Wolf Trap Woods, one of the proposed rezoned neighborhoods, and I would definitely like to be rezoned to Cooper Langley. I'm a seventh grader at Longfellow Middle School and I've been virtual all year. As a result, I have made a few casual virtual friends, but they are not very meaningful friendships. I would not miss them if I moved to Cooper Middle for eighth grade. If I were grandfathered and stayed at Longfellow for eighth grade, I would gather friends next year while in person, but have to say goodbye to them when I went off to Langley. There is no real need to grandfather eighth graders. This tough goodbye has previously occurred at the end of elementary school. I was a student at Spring Hill. About 80% of the sixth grade class went to Cooper and then will go on to Langley. The final 20% that I was a part of was zoned to go to Longfellow and then McLean. I started drifting away from my friends at Spring Hill as early as fifth grade as they knew that I would not move on to middle school and high school with them. So the solitude sets in early. Our neighborhood is relatively small and only a few people near here are in the seventh grade. So there are only a few classmates at Longfellow that I already know. However, at Cooper, I would probably know about 100 classmates. It makes sense to rezone rising eighth graders from Longfellow to Cooper next year. I believe that I speak for all of my fellow seventh graders when I say that we don't need or want grandfathering. A compromise would assume that students could decide between being grandfathered and staying at Longfellow for their eighth grade year or moving to Cooper for eighth grade. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Connor Chung.
Hello. Thank you for having this meeting and giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm a Longfellow student from Colvin Run Elementary School, and I'd like to see my younger brother attend Cooper Middle School with his friends and I would like to attend Langley High School. I'm wondering why and how option C was, has been proposed to the board? What are the specific benefits which put option C over option B? Looking at the map, Colvin Run neighborhoods are closer to Cooper and Langley than the Spring Hill ones in option C. I have also heard diversity as a factor in making this decision. I, along with many others, am not clear about the race, background, or culture of fellow students. Can you address specifically what you mean by diversity? Why is option C the better choice in this regard? And why is this the driving factor?
Is that, is the speaker finished?
Yes.
Thank you. Speaker number three is Sarah Powell.
Hello. Hello, my name is Sarah Powell and I am a sixth grader at Colvin Run Elementary School. In my school, almost all kids go to Cooper and Langley. Where I live, I am the exception and I am supposed to go to Longfellow and then McLean. It doesn't make sense to me why my school is split up and some of my friends go to one school and others go to another school. I've asked my parents, their friends, my softball coaches, and other adults. This didn't happen to any of them. When they were in school, everyone in their elementary went to the same middle school and everyone in their middle school went to the same high school. During all my years at Colvin Run, I have developed relationships with people at this school. Now I have to go to a school with virtually no one that I know. I'm asking the board to fix this. Please change the system so that I can continue to attend the school with the kids that I've known for the last six years. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Callanan.
Yes, hi. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, school board and Dr. Brayband. I just want to highlight, you know, what we've heard from the students so far tonight is it comes down to the fact that if you eliminate feeders at the elementary school level and make any boundary changes, starting with rising seventh graders, you would address all the issues that you just heard from those very articulate kids. What I want to say here tonight is if you do decide to change McLean's boundary, I urge you to follow the data and make the best decision for all kids, not just those with the most vocal parents. Follow the data. Before you follow the data, you actually have to have the data. For 16 months, they've asked how these scenarios account for growth from Tysons and Silverline Development. Where is the data from the Board of Supervisors that supports any of these scenarios? Further, your data on McLean's capacity does not account for the modular, which leaves McLean undercapacity by about 5, 0, 50 students instead of over by hundreds. Amazingly, you also gave, you have no data on how many teachers McLean would lose as a result of any of these boundary scenarios. Although clearly not an important issue for the board, this is a very important issue for the McLean community. Now, after multiple FOIA requests and emails to board members, it's clear FCPS does not have answers to these questions and doesn't understand the impact of any boundary scenario, but how is that possible? Instead of congratulating each other in the latest proposal, I recommend you find the data and please, finally, provide it to all of us. Now make the best decision for all kids. During your 21 January meeting, everyone expressed concern over how the pandemic has placed tremendous stress on our kids. Yet how do you not see the contradiction in your actions tonight? How do you not realize that changing boundaries adds to the already high stress of many kids? Is it fair to remove them from their school in order to create social distancing for others? Further, doesn't the board have more pressing issues to consider right now? When and how will you get our kids back in the classrooms? And, Dr. Brayband, an 83% increase in failing grades? Really? The board and superintendent should be meeting every night to address those issues until you get it right and not discussing a meaningless boundary change. Now do the right thing, please. If you must change boundaries, regardless of the option you pick, you should delay any change until 2022, grandfather all kids, allow current middle schoolers to continue with their cohort instead of being subjected to a second split feeder in two years, and as you again just heard from these students, start it with the elementary schools. Eliminate the split feeders. Finally, I'd like to appeal to all McLean parents. Let's not let the board continue to distract us with more talk of boundaries, modulators, and renocoos. Instead, let's unite to pressure the board to sponsor a bond this fall for an addition to McLean. That has always been the only option that will provide long-term relief for our school. Please, I encourage everyone to reach out to the board and the superintendent, starting tomorrow and every day thereafter, requesting a bond for an addition to McLean. Let's not waste any more time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Doug Taylor.
Hi.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, great. Hi, my name is Doug Taylor. My family lives in the McLean Pyramid with two elementary-age children. First, I want to say thank you in particular to the staff who beside, behind the scenes, have been assembling these options and running the numbers and processing all the feedback and have worked on this revised option as well. Maybe I spend too much time on internet forums, but it seems like there's often a whole lot of focus on what's wrong and not enough on what's right. And even as folks may disagree with this aspect or that aspect of the process or the decision, at least we can have those disagreements respectfully and I just want you to know that we appreciate your efforts to all the staff. For myself, as someone whose profession is data and specifically data transparency, I do wish, echoing the prior speaker, that we had better quality and more granular public data available for us to see. But that said, based upon what I do see, I think the latest proposed option strikes the right balance of providing near-term relief to McLean while keeping options open for the future, which is the right approach given the uncertainty of the years ahead and the evolving nature of the current pandemic. I looked at this year's enrollment numbers at schools in our area and see most are on average about 10% below their projected enrollment for the year. One, I believe, was even 18% below what it was last year. So we don't know if those enrollment levels will resume their prior levels or how rapidly, if the distribution of that will be even across pyramids and so forth. So to me, a relatively conservative approach makes a lot of sense, especially keeping in mind that Cooper is currently under construction for an expansion and could better accommodate an additional boundary move once that expansion is done while maintaining the one-to-one relationship between Longfellow, McLean, and Cooper Langley for the students to avoid split feeders. So I think we're on the right track here. There's also some uncertainty around TJ admissions and the impacts those will have, but I suspect whatever that outcome is, those changes would probably roughly impact McLean and Langley the same. So while that might affect their total capacity numbers, it shouldn't affect their relative capacity numbers too much. And so I think even though we're missing that data, I don't think that's an important factor here. But it's really that future flexibility that I want to highlight and keep top of mind. It's great that we're executing this adjustment, upgrading some trailers to a modular. And while that increases the so-called program capacity at the school, it doesn't really address the library, cafeteria, gym, slines, all the various shared resources of the school that were designed for a smaller student body and are being overtaxed by the additional trailers in addition to the modular that will also have to remain. So this is a great step, but let's not see our work here as done. McLean High School remains very much in need, as the prior speaker again said, of an addition and a renovation. And while we can ease the worst of these, of the pain with these interim measures, let's not lose sight that these measures are only interim and a more comprehensive renovation of McLean High School to meet the needs of the students is long overdue. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Scott Christopherson.
All right, I'm hoping that you can see me.
Yes.
Good evening and for the opportunity to speak. I'm a lifelong resident of Fairfax County, a graduate of these public schools, and the parent of three students in the McLean Pyramid, two of whom currently attend McLean High School and one is in elementary school. If the choice presented to you guys is the proposed modified option C versus nothing, I do hope the school board will do the right thing and vote yes. As the preceding speaker pointed out, it is progress. It is a step in the right direction. That said, I think this option is too little, too late. So I would also echo what the, echo what the prior speaker said, which is if that is all we do in the next week, the community will be agitating for further boundary adjustments and/or a renovation almost immediately. Ever since the renovation of Langley High School was completed just two and a half years ago, we've had the following situation. We've had McLean High enrolled at about 300 or more students overcapacity and Langley enrolled at three or more hundred students undercapacity. And since that's been the case, since the thing opened and was predicted, I went back through the capital plan years before Langley was, was renovation was completed. This was something we knew about and should have fixed or should have anticipated years ago. And yet today, we are only talking about moving 150 students starting next year, so solving half the problem three years late. So if it is possible under your rules, I would urge the board to approve not only option C, but as one of the student speakers advocated earlier, an additional option like option A, which would at least solve the whole problem, albeit, albeit late. And potentially only temporarily. I know there are lots of questions about how fast further development will increase student counts over the coming years. But it does look like that would, would solve the problem for at least enough years to buy us time. I will say I would be delighted if you wanted to consider an expansion or renovation at McLean High School in addition to a move. But I think we need to start with the boundary adjustment because that is the only thing that can solve our problem quickly. The time it takes, I realize, both to plan and execute any kind of capital expansion is, it takes enough years that in the meanwhile, we definitely need this boundary adjustment. I would also add that I agree with my, with the prior speakers who said that the modular structure recently erected is a stopgap measure, a good improvement temporarily, but shouldn't be counted as permanent capacity at McLean High School. We ultimately, the student body above 1,000 permanently.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Animesh Gupta. Animesh Gupta? Animesh Gupta, I believe you are having connection issues. We will come back to you. Speaker eight, Jay Reddy.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. My name is Jay Reddy. I come wearing several hats. I'm in support of a boundary adjustment to move some kids from Longfellow, McLean to Cooper Lang, Cooper Langley. I am the Drainsville District Representative and the School Board's Facilities and Planning Advisory Council. I'm a longtime parent of Fairfax County Public Schools currently with children in Longfellow Middle School and Hancock Elementary School. I'm a past, longtime parent of Franklin Sherman Elementary School in McLean. I was the PTA president there for two years and a treasurer in the, on the PTA board for one year. So I have a deep roots in the schools in this community and in the affected schools. And what I've seen following the community discussion is there certainly are a lot of, what I see as competing and conflicting concerns that parents have around here. And I think that boundary adjustments that be, that are being discussed, you know, and there are arguments pro and con, different ones, but they're absolutely, it's absolutely necessary to do this because they are the best way to harmonize these concerns. I hear people saying they want overcrowding in McLean High School, which what, what precipitated this in the first place, to be addressed quickly. And yet I hear we want an addition built, which we know school construction takes years. And then we hear that we want to make sure that we don't lose programs in McLean High School from under enrollment. And yet we want capacity for future housing growth in the area. How do we resolve all this? And on top of it, you know, there's always the macro concern of fiscal responsibility. I think that moving some kids from the islands is the best way to address this. My understanding, based on what I've heard, is that we would be looking at bringing McLean High down to somewhere in the ballpark of 90% capacity. That leaves room for growth. In my opinion, I'm going to be a McLean High parent myself going forward and so I have a personal interest in this. I don't see that as adversely affecting the availability of programs in McLean High School. I think 90%, we're going to be able to keep what we have there. And then we're still going to have some capacity in Langley. My understanding is we won't be at 100% at Cooper. Longfellow will have some room. Obviously, we have to accommodate possible future enrollment growth from maybe fewer kids ending up at TJ from the McLean and Langley boundaries. Perhaps we're going to have housing that goes up. I respect the people's demand for data, but there isn't a great data available for all of this. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, I think I'm back.
Yeah, I was just gonna call you. Our next speaker is Animesh Gupta. Go ahead.
Hi, greetings, everyone. Greetings, school board members. I'm here to, I don't, to voice a concern that I don't think the boundary adjustment is completely accommodating all the, all the, the voting district. I mean, there is, there is, there is significant development that is coming up and also there is a split school, like Lemon Road is split, West Gate is split. And then we are shepherding Timber Lane all the way from the other side of Route 7 to McLean. And I think there is Luther Jackson, which is 84% capacity. McLean, based on your data, is currently 121% capacity. And Langley, which is like around 83% and Cooper 84%. So I'm asking the school board to consider moving Timber Lane to Luther Jackson and accommodating some of West Gate towards McLean. And also, this will also help the, the students at Timber Lane, which will, they will save so much time in transportation. It takes around 20 minutes to get from the other side of Route 7 to McLean. And also, it will help with the, the, the concerns regarding the overcrowding. And also, you, you have a target of affordable housing. This will also help with the affordable housing. So that's my concern. I think you should take a holistic approach in, in, in looking for transportation, saving time, staying green, and building communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number nine, Hannah Kong.
Hi, hopefully everyone can see me. Hello and good evening. My name is Hannah Kong. I am a mother of two and homeowner in the Drainsville District. While I know this isn't the main topic for tonight's agenda, I would like to highlight and speak to one point in the December 7th boundary presentation, which was on page 23, which highlights considering the impact for other neighborhoods, you know, in this boundary adjustment. I'm part of a small and new neighborhood, Summer House Landing in Drainsville District. We're currently assigned to Herndon High while all of our surrounding neighborhoods are assigned to Langley. Under the Fairfax County Public Schools policy 8130.7, the board can adjust the boundary for various reasons. And my neighborhood clearly falls under three of these. You know, one is that it's a new, previously unoccupied and newly developed housing neighborhood. Second is that our, our neighborhood is small. We only have 30 neighbors, 30 houses with about 10 that are currently school age. So this would have very, very small impact on the relevant schools. And three, you know, as shown in all of these boundary consultant reports, there is a lot of overcrowding at many of these schools, especially Herndon High, which, you know, now and in up to forecasted up to 2025 is supposed to be over 100%. Meanwhile, Langley is only at 78% and, you know, people are talking about option C, which I think even in that scenario, there is still a 7% capacity left over at Langley. Again, all of our surrounding neighborhoods are already Langley and so student and bus transportation already comes this way. The, the school bus literally stops in front of our neighborhood. And so, you know, for, you know, we don't, my intent is not to detract from tonight's conversation, which I think is very important. I just want to highlight that I think it's important for every student to be given the same thoughtful consideration. And, you know, although we're a small and new neighborhood, we believe that our children and students should be given just as much equal consideration as larger or more established neighborhoods. You know, we, this is not our first attempt to reach out to the board. And at the time, we were told that any boundary decisions will be held off until the boundary consultant report, which I understand is now. And so it's kind of difficult for a small, smaller and newer neighborhoods to have a voice. And I believe that if a neighborhood is able to clearly show that it can meet criteria that's set out in the policy, then no matter how small it is, it should have an avenue to be clearly heard, considered, and voted on by the board. And so I would appreciate the board's thought and consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Waple.
Good evening. Thank you for taking time to engage with the community and all of its stakeholders. This includes residents like me and all those in my neighborhood. Over this long process have been included among those areas at risk of having their children moved. I heard both students who spoke tonight express the view that they would rather move to other schools. Each had different reasons, but a common theme among them points directly to the split feeder issue. I agree that this definitely needs to be addressed through a long-term and graduated approach. What I have also heard is that our students are frustrated and that they see no one in a distance learning environment during the pandemic. My son, who attends McLean High School, deeply shares the same frustration and concern. Our kids spend most of their days by engaging remotely by Zoom, uncertain what school will look like next year or any time in the future, unable to engage with friends except by video chat, but when they do, wearing masks, and stressed out over online exams and juggling multiple classroom technologies. The bottom line of my remarks can be summarized through one question. Why would we as a community proceed with a boundary adjustment? Why would we as a community proceed with a boundary adjustment during a pandemic? I cannot stress enough that it has increased the stress of many students and my family who are potentially on the chopping block during this long deliberative process. Another concern I have about the boundary adjustment is that the pandemic has inserted additional unknown variables into the data analysis done to date. My understanding is that the pandemic may have changed the growth forecast. Forecasts appear to show far less overcapacity in the immediate and midterm periods, in particular in Tysons. I would add, ask the board to reassess the numbers and look very hard at whether or not the current options best solve the problem you're seeking to address. That said, if the board moves forward on a boundary adjustment, despite the concerns shared by my family and neighbors, I would ask that you begin with the seventh graders. Lastly, because you're working on a modular annex for McLean now, why not look at adding a bond referendum onto the next election to make this permanent? I end by noting my appreciation for your work and taking into account all the concerns and opinions shared tonight and over the course of this long stressful process. And I wish everyone health and, and safety during the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Fadi Shadid.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, please.
Okay, great. This is Fadi Shadid. I'm representing the Great Falls Citizens Association's Special Committee on Schools. We thank FCPS for hosting another public comment meeting on this important decision. My group, which are parents and residents in the Langley Pyramid, along with other community groups directly affected by our decision, have been recommending option A with a more important long lead request. And that request has been to add McLean High School to the renovation queue in this year's capital improvement plan program. Option A, the Colvin Run area really does relieve McLean High School, offers relief to McLean High School comparable to the FCPS staff recommended option. Both options allow room for all growth at the affected schools. The four-year phasing will allow us to monitor growth. And I'd like to stress that monitoring growth is vital because of the pandemic and the unknown variables. And I want to cite one example, and we've presented this to, to the board back in January 7, 2020 CIP meeting. FCPS has been underestimating growth at Langley High School in every single CIP over the past 10 years. At community meetings, members have frequently cited the need to solve the problem of sending students and friends from one middle school to multiple high schools, the split feeder problem we've been hearing about. Option A solves one split feeder problem completely. On the mixed housing criteria, the staff's recommended option does redistrict some condominiums and apartments in the Tyson's Corner area to Langley, but it does not solve the community's split feeder problem. If the board moves ahead with option A or the FCPS staff recommended option, we do appreciate the grandfathering and the four-year phasing approach. Either option provides some immediate relief to McLean High School overcrowding, but it does not reduce the urgency of adding McLean High School to the renovation queue so that this boundary adjustment can be the last adjustment for years to come for our communities and students. I do wish to thank Ms. Tholen, our municipal representative. You've been very responsive and generous with your time discussing this important process with us. Thank you for your efforts to find a solution for our communities. We have more work to do and we look forward to continuing to work with you and the board to help provide the best learning spaces and resources to our community-based schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jennifer Coleman.
I'd like to start by also thanking the school board for their attention to this matter and especially to those of you with whom I've had the opportunity to talk and to meet. I am grateful in particular to Mr. Tholen, who has opened the lines of communication and who has diligently pushed to address a myriad of concerns from a very diverse constituency, not only in this just, this issue, but others. With regard to the proposal, modified option C, the first thing that came to my mind was a list of questions. Many of them are not new. Why are we doing this now in the midst of a pandemic that has raised so many new questions relevant to capacity, attendance, potential growth in resources, has thrown our traditional ways of teaching and learning out the window and placed huge emotional burdens on our students and teachers? Even absent the pandemic, why aren't we getting or waiting until we have all the best data, projections and insights? Isn't that just now finally in process? Why aren't we trusting the work of the only just formed joint task force? Whatever happened to the boundary consultants' work? How is learning going to look going forward for years to come, including the possibilities of hybrid learning? How is all of that going to affect in-person attendance and the use of our facilities across the district? Are split feeders going to be addressed? Last but not least, is option C seriously a long-term solution? Or does it still leave the children and families in my neighborhood and other neighborhoods in perpetual limbo and stress? I don't think there is any doubt that education will change after the pandemic and that the boundary change is becoming an outdated concept. I heard a whole lot at the school board meetings earlier this month about comprehensive plans and lofty goals for system-wide improvements and impact. And I just don't see where this outcome, option C, fits in. Does it address the system-wide goals or long-term improvements that are sought? Does it promote or support the world-class education or thoughtful impactful planning that has been talked about? At the end of the day, after all the hours, days, months and years spent on trying to address capacity issues just at McLean High School, knowing the resource available in this county and the important broader issues of growth and service within our entire district, this outcome and especially its timing seems sort of silly. The last of four children in my household who have gone through Fairfax County Public Schools is now a junior at McLean High School. Under, under the amended scenario C, she would not move, but she's still impacted. We're all still impacted. The whole community is impacted. I know firsthand that the work of broader scope is hard and it can be tedious, but the outcomes are so much greater. I know the format for tonight does not allow for back and forth addressing of my questions. So my message is that I hope you are hearing the questions and that especially in light of the pandemic and all of the new questions that living through it has raised, that it is okay to push pause in order to not just thoughtfully address, but answer these kinds of questions before change is finalized. Thank you.
Thank you. Number, speaker number 13, Rob Carter.
Thank you for your time and attention to this issue. I strongly support this rezoning proposal. And I believe it should be implemented this fall. There's been some talk about stress, but I actually believe this helps relieve stress by providing closure to a long rezoning process that's been going on for many, many years and let some split feeders, not all unfortunately, but some split feeders be with their friends. I am a resident of Wolf Trap Woods, one of the impacted neighborhoods. I have a seventh grader at Longfellow and a fourth grader at Spring Hill. My seventh grade daughter spent seven years in the Langley Pyramid at Spring Hill before being switched to the McLean Pyramid at middle school due to our very strange boundary map. All of her friends are only a mile away in the Langley Pyramid. Most Longfellow McLean students are nowhere near us. The vast majority of Spring Hill attends Cooper Langley, while our small pocket neighborhood attends Longfellow McLean. Our neighborhood is geographically isolated, sandwiched between the toll road, Leesburg Pike and Wolf Trap Forest. With only about 125 homes, it's rare for a student to have more than one or two classmates in their neighborhood. When they separate from their Spring Hill friends to go to Cooper, who go to Cooper, it's very tough on them. As early as fifth or sixth grade, their friends start to recognize that they won't be staying with them. And so the loneliness for many starts early. Unlike most of the Vienna Islands further west, our neighborhood is relatively small and isolated. The Colvin Run neighborhoods like Shouse are generally larger and have many nearby friends to join their transition to Longfellow. I'm sure many of them want to move to Langley as well due to the split feeder situation. However, unfortunately, capacity constraints at Cooper makes that impossible to move everyone. I appreciate that the rezoning proposal took into account these unique characteristics of our neighborhood. I also appreciate that it helps to balance the diversity between Langley and McLean by moving part of Tyson's. So I strongly support this proposal. My concern at this point is around grandfathering. If grandfathering includes rising eighth graders, my daughter would attend Longfellow next year and then switch pyramids yet again to Langley in ninth grade. This is exactly the double split feeder situation we sought to avoid last year by adding middle schools to the scope. While I appreciate typical grandfathering and enable students to finish middle school without changing midstream, this policy makes no sense during a pandemic. Seventh graders haven't been able to make any meaningful connections during their virtual middle school. If rezoning is approved now, I would like for my daughter to attend Cooper next year. That would return her to the Langley Pyramid, allow her to reconnect with her elementary school friends and make new connections that she'll keep through high school. Please approve this rezoning proposal, stop the delay and allow flexible choice for rising eighth graders and higher. Grandfathering eighth graders at Longfellow only to switch them to Langley the following year is unfair. Let them attend Cooper this fall. For ninth and higher, grandfathering in choice would be best as well.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tanya Powell.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Tanya Powell and I'm the parent of a current ninth grader and sixth grader. The reason I'm asked to speak today is because I object to the limited option C that staff has proposed as a solution for the overcrowding at McLean High School. I object to it because it doesn't address the core problems that really matter most to the community. I'm specifically addressing two issues. The first issue is overcrowding at McLean. We all know that McLean is currently busting at the seams. In the latest numbers that the board put out with the presentations, it seems that overcrowding has been alleviated, which seems great. And when I dig into the numbers, I noticed the biggest impact was the design capacity of the school has increased by 350 students. If you increase the size of the school to accommodate 350 more students, that solves a lot. But then I asked myself, what really happened? What did they do? All that's been shared is they've taken 12 trailers, pulled them out and replaced them with 12 modular classrooms. Now I've heard the statements before about how the modular classrooms are better. They are better. They, they do have bathroom space. But they're still temporary classrooms. There's been no increase to capacity in the hallways of the school. There's been no increase in the gymnasium space. There's been no increase in the cafeteria space. You're still jamming the same number of students into the same space, yet miraculously you count it as a bigger school. And what I would characterize this is, is smoke and mirrors. The school hasn't gotten any bigger and it doesn't have any bigger capacity. And to say that you can now have a school that accommodates 350 more students in my mind is disingenuous. It's just trying to pull the wool over our eyes. Things are not getting any better in the school. That's the first reason I object to what staff has proposed. Second issue is about split feeders. Split feeders were one of the reasons to be addressed in this situation. And if you look at the proposal, it does nothing to address this. Colvin Run, where my children attend, is a split feeder and Spring Hill are currently split feeders. And after all is said and done, they'll both still be split feeders. I recognize that part of the problem is overcrowding at Cooper Middle School. And while I understand that we would all like for all of the kids to be on the same path, if that's not possible, then I would ask to come up with an option to move more students to Langley and temporarily leave them at Longfellow. That would immediately address overcrowding in McLean while not overcrowding Cooper. Then when construction at Cooper is completed, you can move more of those students to Cooper. This is a solution that immediately addresses the overcrowding and diversity issues and puts us on a defined path to address the split feeder issue. I encourage you to revisit your decision and come up with something that actually solves the issue the community is concerned about. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bahar Sharif, but I do not see them online. So we'll skip to number 16, which is David Hardison.
Hi, good evening. So I began to follow this issue some years ago when I had a student in McLean. And FCPS really didn't have a plan to deal with the enrollment growth there. Tonight I have three observations. First, I don't think most people would think ill of you if you decide to pause a boundary change. I can't recall a single boundary change in recent years where FCPS changed boundaries without having solid estimates of the expected impact based on current data in which it had a high degree of confidence. You don't have that now. McLean's current enrollment is over 100 students below what you projected only a year ago. And in the most recent CIP, FCPS disclaims any ability to project future enrollments over the next five years due to the impact of COVID. Staff's done some good work recently to develop some options and I thank Ms. Tholen for working with staff to make that happen. But right now you run a significant risk of moving too many students to few. FCPS has now added a modular in McLean that expands its capacity by over 15%. So you can revisit boundaries when you have better information upon which to base a decision. Second, if you do adjust the boundaries, the staff's recommendation, the modified version of option C, is preferable to the remaining options. Options A and B would only move students living in single-family homes to Langley and would add no housing diversity there. And the original option C would move so many students that McLean would be forced to quickly de-staff teachers and discontinue electives. In comparison, the staff's recommendation reflects a more thoughtful, balanced approach that improves on the original options and actually takes equity into account. So finally, let's not forget we're in this situation because FCPS made a penny-wise, pound-foolish decision years ago to deny McLean a permanent addition, even though its enrollment had been growing for years. Instead, he added seats that weren't needed at Langley during its renovation, even though Langley's enrollment had been flat. As a result, as it's done too often, FCPS creates a dynamic where families are incentivized to bid against each other to move to a wealthier school, in this case Langley. It's not my intent to disparage the motives of any speakers. But let's be real, the converse rarely happens. That is, folks don't come in and ask that you eliminate a split theater so their children can attend an aging, less wealthy school. That dynamic is unhealthy and it degrades McLean and other schools in FCPS. As board members, please insist on a path going forward that also adds permanent seats to overcrowded legacy schools like McLean. With that, I'll close. Thank you all for all your efforts.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jeff Deason.
Hello. Hi, my name is Jeff Deason. I live in, across the street from Colvin Run in the option A zone. I have a seven and three-year-old boys who will attend Colvin Run. First, I want to thank the board for responding to our community input on phasing and middle schools. Those moves have helped save unnecessary stress. Second, I want to object to the proposed option. In the board meeting last week, multiple members talked about the importance of community input. And after years of meetings, communal reviews and debates, the Community Advisory Council, representing a broad range of constituents, agreed on option A as a compromise. Then, just days before the vote, a new bewildering option was provided, hybrid option C. Hybrid option C creates more problems than it solves. Let's just kind of step back and summarize. First, we've gone from two split feeders to two split feeders. The 240 kids going to Spring Hill and the McLean Pyramid have been reduced to 60. Let's just think about that for a second. Last year, Spring Hill graduated 172 kids. 60 of them went to Longfellow. Now, under this new plan, 20 will go to Longfellow. For the average student in this zone, they're going to lose nine out of 10 classmates as they go to, to middle school. Evenly split feeders are bad, but unevenly split feeders are much worse. None of the previous options had this flaw. Second, we've moved from unusually gerrymandered high school map to a map that's even worse. The kids at Colvin Run are miles and miles away from their nearest McLean classmates. The transportation island is isolating, expensive and unnecessary. And personally, I look at this map and realize it can't last. And I'm fearful of more upheaval for my family and community with ongoing boundary discussions. If you vote for the current option, please consider a commitment to longer-term boundary stability. The argument shared by Ms. Tholen was largely around diversity. I think differences between our area and a neighborhood anchored by Tesla and Whole Foods are arguable, but I'm not going to get into that argument here. I'm supportive of more diversity in schools. Many FCPS boundaries make little sense. However, there's another, this is another step towards nonsense. This will be the most remote island by, in the district by over a mile. In the, in summary, we've taken three simple solutions and replaced them with a fourth convoluted solution that keeps two split feeders, isolates 10% of the Spring Hill class, further fragments the map and gives me no confidence that future boundaries will pay attention to any geographic or community logic. Hybrid option C is not a positive step forward. It's a step back. Vote no on hybrid option C. Pick A, pick B, pick the original C, just not this. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number 18, Dennis Lee.
Yes, thank you. First, I'd like to thank the board for their time this evening. Especially like to thank Member Tolan for her engagement on this matter. It is greatly appreciated. I also like to thank the FCPS staff for their hard work. I am speaking to you today as part of a group of homeowners who rubber thin neighborhoods whose kids attend Colvin Run but then are split up from their classmates and are sent to Longfellow and McLean. Earlier today, I sent the school board a comprehensive analysis of the boundary change options in our recommendations. I hope you have read it, or will take time to read it at some point before you vote. That said, I wanted to provide you a summary of that right now. Our recommendation is that the board reject the option C and instead choose, in order, option B, option A, or explore other alternatives for the following reasons. First, option B provides more relief to McLean by moving 190 students to Langley versus 159. Option B also does not overcrowd Cooper as it only moves five more students than option C. Option A doesn't move as many students but does have the benefit of not overburdening Cooper during its renovation. It is also the option closest to the current situation and therefore the least disruptive. Secondly, only two options, B and A, fully eliminate a split feeder. Option C does not. Thirdly, in seeking housing diversity as a proxy for socioeconomic diversity for Langley in Tysons, you should be aware that the monthly rent of apartment units as well as prices of the condominiums in Tysons. They show near equivalent store neighborhoods when comparing monthly all-in expense, including condo fees and such. For example, a luxury apartment building in the area has multiple listings of two-bedroom apartments with monthly rent of $4,700 or more. That is higher than the monthly expenses for a homeowner in our area. On the topic of diversity, in discussion with Supervisor John Faust, he noted that the diversity of our neighborhoods is often overlooked. Our neighborhoods will add to the diversity of Langley as many of the students are from diverse backgrounds and/or the children of immigrant. Lastly, options B and A are the most consistent with Section 9 of Policy 8130, specifically with respect to, and I quote, "split feeder alignment contiguous school attendance areas that impact on neighborhoods and the natural man-made geographic features." On that last point, if our area were not switched to Langley, we would be the only area that is both north of the toll road and west of the Beltway assigned to McLean, a literal island separated by high-speed freeways from Mainland. In closing, I hope you will support options B or A and agree that both are long-term solutions to address the overcrowding issue at McLean. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 19, Laura Mattis.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Great, thank you. Fellow school board members, my name is Laura Mattis. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and for the time to consider feedback and requests from the community to help inform your decision next week. I'm a parent of three children who attend FCPS schools impacted by the proposed boundary change. I wanted to speak tonight because of the mixed feelings and hopes our family has about the proposed boundary change. Of the proposal options, no one option is a clear winner for our family. In every scenario, one of my children loses, so it is hard to feel happy or strongly about any of the options before us. I'd like to use this time to solicit your support with two requests. Grandfathering and the ability for impacted students to choose whether they continue on at McLean or move to Langley. I have a 10th grade daughter at McLean who hopes to continue her education here through graduation. I'm hopeful grandfathering will be implemented for current enrolled students at McLean impacted by a boundary change. I also have an eighth grader at Longfellow who hopes to continue on with her middle school cohort and attend McLean with her sister next of all. I'm concerned the impact on rising ninth graders that would be moved from Longfellow to Langley is being overlooked. Less than two years ago, Spring Hill students slated for Longfellow were separated from their peers who went on to Cooper. At that time, there was not an option to attend Cooper due to being out of boundary. Here we are, less than two years later, and it is proposed to uproot this population again. I am hopeful impacted rising ninth graders, especially those with a sibling attending McLean, can be grandfathered or given the choice to attend McLean or Langley based on individual and family preference. I also have a sixth grade son at Spring Hill who wants more than anything to continue on with his peers at Cooper and ultimately Langley. My rising seventh grader is experiencing similar anxieties that his sisters faced when they were separated from their peers when graduating from Spring Hill. I empathize, having gone through this twice before in the past four years with both of his sisters. Therefore, I am hopeful rising seventh graders in the impacted boundary area will be able to attend Cooper with their Spring Hill peers. With three kids in three different schools and grades, boundary change or no boundary change, our family and each of our children are impacted in different ways. If option C is adopted, it would ease the impacts of an upcoming change if grandfathering of current high schoolers and rising ninth graders was allowed, in addition to offering the ability of families to choose for those who do want to move schools. In summary, I believe this will enable families to best embrace and adopt the boundary change ahead while supporting individual learning needs and emotional well-being. Thank you very much for your time and consideration this evening.
Thank you. Speaker number 20, Arun Chenani.
Good evening. Thank you for the chance to speak with the board this evening to endorse option B as a preferred option and option A as a secondary option if necessary. As a preface to my comments, please alight and may thanks to County Supervisor John Faust, our Board Representative Elaine, and the at-large board members and FCPS staff who've engaged with our neighborhood. I'd like to acknowledge the efforts of our neighborhood families across the Wolf Den and Coventry Springs integrated neighborhoods who've led discussions with many of you. My comments today align with the memorandum that was sent to all of you on behalf of neighborhood families by Dennis Lee and Tom Sebastian, which articulated the rationale for supporting option B as a preferred option and reserving option A as a secondary option. We request a consistent alignment of our Wolf Den and Coventry Springs neighborhood to the Colvin Run-Cooper-Langley Pyramid, even if other options are considered by the board in a modified way. It is our understanding that the board would like to prioritize and meet the objectives of alleviating overcrowding at McLean High School, of pyramid consistency and diversity. Additionally, the board would like to do that in a sustainable manner that keeps neighborhood integrated in a way that does right by kids, a 2021 goal set by the members of the board. Option B in particular, and secondly, option A, would address the board's priorities and also reflect the preferences of several parents and families in our immediate neighborhood. It would address overcapacity in McLean, provide consistency in terms of Colvin Run-Cooper-Langley school pyramid for the current neighborhood kids, would reflect geographic consistency for our neighborhoods, which are integrated, contiguous, and in closer proximity to the school pyramid. It would extend international diversity, as about half of homes in our neighborhood are of international origin with multilingual households. Additionally, our neighborhood also reflects professional diversity across healthcare, government, armed forces, trade and services, small business and private sector companies. On the other hand, option C as proposed will not effectively meet all of the objectives mentioned. Additionally, option C will not only split contiguous neighborhoods but also split homes that are in fact part of the same HOA into different school pyramids across K through 12. The inefficiencies created by this split would not only be disruptive for kids and families in the community but also have an impact on recurring operating costs for FCPS and have an environmental cost. For example, with duplicative bus routes for the same contiguous neighborhood. One of the key values of neighborhood schools is that they provide consistent friendship activities and community for the kids outside of school within the neighborhoods. For kids and families, the value of keeping contiguous neighborhoods aligned with their neighborhood schools has been evident over much of last year when schools and community-centered activities have remained closed. Thus, option C as proposed represents, at best, an incomplete proposal and should at least be modified to include Wolf Den and Coventry Springs neighborhoods for consistent alignment with Colvin Run-Cooper and Langley Pyramid, or it should be reconsidered. In closing, we hope that you're able to take all of the above factors and concerns of kids, parents, and neighborhoods. Accordingly, we request a move towards consistent alignment of Cooper and Langley.
Thank you. The speaker's time is now up. Speaker number 21, Kate Phillips, has notified us that she will not be speaking tonight, so we'll go to speaker number 22, Sasha Pachinek.
Hello, my name is Sasha Pachinek. I live in Wolf Den neighborhood, and I have two kids currently attending Colvin Run Elementary School. My oldest one is in sixth grade, and she'll be going to middle school next year and is very eager to find out which school she'll be going to. But before I proceed, I did want to say thank you to the board for taking the time to hear directly from the community and Elaine Tolan specifically, who took the time to speak to the parents in our neighborhood earlier this week. From all those conversations, it appears that there are three objectives that the board is trying to achieve here. One is to alleviate crowding at McLean High School, which was covered in great length today, that shows that option C would not achieve this. The second option is achieve the pyramid consistency and then also to increase diversity at Langley and Cooper. Again, I believe that option C would not achieve any of these objectives, and I urge the staff to approve options B or A instead. Both options A and B would eliminate a split feeder situation from Colvin Run. Option C does not eliminate either split feeder that many speakers today have already discussed. As the previous speaker also mentioned, that one of the key value of neighborhood schools is they provide consistent friendships, activities, and communities for kids outside the school within their communities. And this option C would split the one HOA neighborhood that we have between Wolf Den and the Wolf Den area. If you feel strongly that it's better to keep the students together from one elementary school through high school, option B or A would achieve this. For example, this week, counselors from middle schools visited sixth graders at Colvin Run, and my daughter realized that she's the only one from her elementary school friends that will be going to Longfellow next year. And all of her friends will be going to Cooper, and it's very upsetting to her. In addition, option A or B would make the most logical solution geographically. If option C was selected, it would create an island scenario for us, where the areas east and west of us would be attached to Langley while we would still be attached to McLean. So not only option C will most likely have a negative effect on transportation efficiency, it will decrease the chances of finding any acceptable carpool arrangements, especially for after-school activities and sports, and my kids are very eager to participate in once the schools reopen. And another thing that some people touched on today was the issue of diversity. Many of the students' parents in our neighborhood are first-generation immigrants, including myself. Some people tried to pull statistics, and some speakers said there's not enough data available to really dig deep into this, but I really don't have to look far. When I go to the bus stop, last year when I went to the bus stop to pick up my kids, you can see how majority of our neighborhood is very diverse. And choosing option A or B would definitely add to the diversity of Cooper and then...
Thank you for your time. Our next speaker is Tom Sebastian.
Hi, this is Tom Sebastian. I'm a resident of the Coventry Springs neighborhood, which is effectively part of Wolf Den. And like many adults and students that we've heard from tonight, I strongly urge the board to adopt either option B or option A, preferably B. And I'll explain to you why. The reasons you're going to hear from me are things that we've heard from many other people tonight. First of all, currently, 90% of the students at Colvin Run Elementary go to Cooper-Langley. The remaining 10% of the students, and these kids live in our neighborhoods, have to go through the traumatic process of separating from their childhood friends and go to a separate middle school and high school. So the boundary realignment process we're going through is an opportunity to fix this significant problem. Secondly, from a geographic standpoint, options B and A are by far the most logical because our neighborhoods are geographically contiguous with the Langley High School District. And our neighborhoods are closer to Cooper and Langley than the other neighborhoods. By contrast, option C would actually create an island out of our neighborhoods, which would be separated by nearly three miles from the rest of the McLean High School District. Our neighborhoods would also be separated from the McLean High School District by the Dulles Toll Road, a significant physical barrier. So it really feels like the option C would significantly disadvantage our neighborhoods, both the students and the parents. Option C would also tear the Wolf Trap Woods Homeowners Association in half and send them to different middle school and high school districts, which would be extremely unfortunate. It would place a burden on the students from a friendship standpoint and a significant burden on the parents from a carpooling and friendship standpoint. So please do not adopt option C. Also, from an ethnic diversity standpoint, our neighborhoods would contribute significantly to the ethnic diversity of Langley High School. In the Coventry Springs neighborhood, 77% of the adults are minorities, non-white, and 100% of the K through 12 kids, 100% of them are minorities, non-white. And we've heard from other Wolf Den parents that in Wolf Den, over half of the school-aged children are minority, non-white. So again, our neighborhoods would contribute significantly to the ethnic diversity of Langley. The last point I want to make is that I've heard this term "housing diversity," and I think in this case that should not be a priority because you take an example of one of the multifamily buildings on Tyco Road, the Adair. You have two-bedroom apartments there rent for as much as $6,000 per year. So there aren't...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaker number 24, Nora Molnar.
Hi, my name is Nora Molnar. I have students at McLean High School, and I am one of the members of the committee that Elaine Tolan put together with Carl Frisch's office and Supervisor Faust and Palace Check's office and the Office of Facilities. And first, I'd just like to thank Ms. Tolan for putting that committee together and commend you for getting all of those groups together. I want to be clear that McLean is not currently overcrowded. Our design capacity at McLean High School is currently 2,343, and our enrollment is 2,292. So we're under-enrolled by 51 students, which means that we don't have an urgent need for a boundary change. The premise of the boundary change comes from the CIP, which says that McLean is overcrowded and Langley is under capacity and going to lose 117 more students over the next five years. It also suggests that the four high schools serving the Tysons area will remain relatively flat over the next five years for a total growth of about 100 students. My concern is that the premise is wrong and that the documents and data in the county's own database suggest a massive growth coming from the Tysons development in the near future. The Fairfax County Planning Commission's Tyson's Progress Report, figure P2 on page 48, says that approximately 500 to 600 students will be coming to the Tyson's Corner High Schools from development that is already under construction. That same figure also says that approximately 500 to 600 students more will be coming to the Tyson's High Schools based on development that has been already approved. The Fairfax County Demographic Report, prepared by a different Fairfax office, predicts that the zip code of 22102 alone will add 4,000 households in the next five years. That's in Table 5.5 on Page V6. The student yield memos that are developed in connection with the proffers also predict thousands of students coming to the Tyson's area based on development that is already approved or under construction. And my question is, why is this data not sufficient to support planning for capital for a permanent addition to McLean High School now, when McLean High School is one of the smallest schools in the system and we're expected to support this development coming out of Tysons? And in closing, I would say, we have a bond coming up this fall. And I would ask that we allow Elaine Tolan's committee to do our work, and if we conclude that planning is necessary at this time for a permanent expansion, to put this project on the bond this fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jamie Page Deaton.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Thank you to the school board for this opportunity to speak, as well as their work on the redistricting measures. I also want to thank the school board's staff for their efforts, with a special thank you to Wendy Bitler, the staff aide to board member Elaine Tolan. She's been incredibly responsive and thoughtful in all communications on this issue and is a true asset to the board. I'm Jamie Page Deaton. I'm a parent of a first grader and a third grader at Colvin Run Elementary. I'm also a resident of the Wolf Den neighborhood, which is on the south side of Route 7 and the west side of McLean Bible Church. the west side of McLean Bible Church. The Wolf Den neighborhood is part of the Wolf Trap Woods Homeowner Association, along with the Wolf Trap Woods neighborhood. The two neighborhoods are one community with strong personal and legal bonds. Our community shares common lands with woods and trails along Wolf Trap Creek and Old Courthouse Spring Branch. We also share amenities, including basketball and tennis courts, which foster social bonds between the children of both neighborhoods. I believe this community didn't do an adequate job in expressing that we are one community to the board. The result is that the recommendation of the board, option C, has Wolf Trap Woods redistricted to Langley, while Wolf Den is not. This has created an incredible amount of conflict and animosity in our community. Our community has to work together on other issues, including the widening of Route 7, but with the vitriol that's been on display as a result of the recommendation, I wonder if we can. When we were in the same high school pyramid, students from both neighborhoods worked together on projects in our woods and held internships together. Our students could carpool to school and extracurriculars. With the proposed changes, those bonds and opportunities will disappear. Beyond that, the recommendation puts an undue burden on the children in Wolf Den, as students at Colvin Run, 90% of their friends will already go to Cooper-Langley. While not ideal, prior to the recommendation, they would at least have had their neighborhood friends with them at Longfellow. Now their neighborhood and school friends will be going to Cooper, leaving Wolf Den children largely to start all over in middle school. I'm only half kidding when I wonder if that violates the Geneva Conventions. As earlier speakers noted, Wolf Den is small, but a small but diverse neighborhood with families of many different races, nationalities, religions, and sexualities. There are 78 homes in Wolf Den. If you include Coventry Springs and Lucky Estates, two communities that share roads with Wolf Den, the number is just 102 homes. These communities could be added to option C without overcrowding the Cooper-Langley Pyramid. However, I strongly urge the board to adopt option B, which is the option that does the most towards eliminating split feeders and alleviating overcrowding at McLean, the two primary goals of the redistricting plan. Doing so would allow more children to keep their school and neighborhood friends when they go to seventh grade, do more to alleviate overcrowding, and hopefully allow the Wolf Trap Woods Homeowners Association to heal from the terrible rift that this has caused. Thank you again for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andrew Freeman.
Members of the school board, thank you for providing me the opportunity to address you this evening. My name is Andy Freeman, and I am proud to be a product of and former employee of Fairfax County Public Schools. I live in Shouse Village, and my children will be attending Colvin Run Elementary in the very near future, and I'm in favor of option A. Let's quickly run through the goals of the school boundary adjustment, and it will become clear that option A makes the most logical sense of the four options presented. Does option A achieve the goal of realigning the balance of enrollment at Langley and McLean High Schools? Yes. Does option A solve for one of the two elementary school split feeder areas? Yes. Furthermore, the elementary school that would benefit from the split feeder resolution under option A, Colvin Run, is literally physically located in our neighborhood. Three, are the neighborhoods that are reassigned under option A contiguous with other neighborhoods that will be attending the same middle and high schools? Yes. Now, let's compare those same criteria under option C. Does option C achieve the goal of realigning the balance of enrollments? Yes. Does option C solve for one of the two elementary school split feeder areas? No. The split feeder issue for Colvin Run would persist, and it still doesn't resolve the split feeder issue completely for Spring Hill. Three, are the neighborhoods that will, that are reassigned under option C contiguous with other neighborhoods that will be attending the same middle and high schools? No, not even close. And this is where the logic of option C completely falls apart. Taking a look at the option C map, the first thing that should jump out at you is option C creates a four-mile-wide gulf between the western edges of the McLean High School boundaries and the eastern edges of the Colvin Run Westbrier neighborhoods of option A. You will be cutting off the children in our neighborhoods from at least 90% of their classmates and leave them detached on a geographical island. I did a quick review of all the other boundary maps for Fairfax County's high schools, and I could find no other island at a distance of four miles from the contiguous boundaries of their respective high school. So option C would at least be unprecedented, but there's still time to make things right and restore logic. Option A would connect the Colvin Run Westbrier neighborhoods with the Langley boundaries on the western and northern sides. Option A would also leave in place the Spring Hill neighborhoods of option C that are assigned to McLean, as those neighborhoods are much closer to the western edges of the McLean High School boundaries. I'm all in favor of diversity and equity, but we cannot override logic to try and achieve those goals. Thank you for your time and allowing me to speak this evening. I look forward to hearing you choose option A next Thursday at the school board meeting.
Thank you. Speaker number 27, Bonnie Arthur.
Hi. I'm not sure who I'm addressing here, since there doesn't seem to be a single school board member with their cameras on, but I am a McLean parent, asking the school board to table this issue until the results of this disastrous year can be analyzed, and the resulting actual enrollment numbers can be used as a calculation, a calculation for school boundaries, as other speakers have mentioned. Specifically, enrollment across Fairfax County is down significantly. Last reports are that nearly 13,000 children have fled FCPA due to this board's inability to provide the quality education that this system was once known for. A safe assumption, in my own observation, is that a larger percentage of those leaving the public schools are in the McLean area. Not only do we have a large number of private schools, but many families in this area have the resources to pay that extra tuition so their children can be educated. And they are being educated, five days a week, in person. Talking to numerous friends and neighbors who have fled the public school system this year, they're pleased with the education that their kids are receiving and have no intention on returning to the now failing public school system. Many in McLean, myself included, are waiting to see what, if anything, you decide about fall 2021. And frankly, we're considering moving or putting children into private schools. Your numbers for McLean and Langley High Schools, therefore, are flat-out wrong and should not be used as the basis for any decision-making. As you're using data that's no longer valid, you are wasting precious time and resources analyzing the boundary issues right now. It's imperative that you stop this waste, table this issue until schools are open for in-person education five days a week, before you analyze enrollment numbers and calculate any then-necessary enrollment changes. The Titanic is sinking, and you're again rearranging deck chairs and throwing children overboard at the same time. Focus on the crisis at hand and then reassess all of the other secondary issues once this ship is brightened.
Our next speaker is Stephen Mills.
Hi, everyone, and thank you for having this discussion today. And I've learned quite a bit from a lot of different folks, as far as the data analysts who talked about how things have changed in the housing developments, new developments, and a lot of things look like they're changing quite a bit. So I'm more concerned with, on the grandfathering option, is I, you know, I have a sixth, seventh grader right now currently going to Ambleside, which is a private school, who's actually going back to Longfellow next year. So that, again, explains how, yes, the data isn't accurate right now. I think a lot of people are going to be wanting to go back once they can have in-person schooling, but I have one who's an eighth grader at Longfellow, who is going into McLean next year, and then I have someone returning back to Longfellow this year. My concern is also more that, you know, I know I represent probably a small demographic here, but there may be mixed families in here where you have, I recently purchased a home in the Franklin Sherman Elementary School, just to make sure that my kids were able to go to the same middle school, but different bus routes. So I need to make sure that, you know, what do we do in those situations, where we need to be concerned about bus routes and impacted kids, not just from the schools, but where the actual kids are living? So I just want to add that to the other comments that have been shared tonight. So let me see what else. And my understanding is Franklin Sherman was actually part of the Cooper Pyramid or Langley Pyramid in the past. So I'm not sure if that is a mixed school, but those are my points, and I just want to make those clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number 29, Partha Sam. Don't see Partha Sam. Okay, we'll skip to speaker number 30, Soumya Banerjee.
Hey, this is Soumya. So I am a resident of Shouse Village, which is right next to the Colvin Run School.
I'm sorry, sir. Would you mind turning off your camera? There's a blinking light.
All right.
Thank you.
Sure. Hey, so I'm Soumya Banerjee. I'm a parent of two kids who go to Colvin Run, and we live right next door in Shouse Village. My kids, one of my kids in grade six is going to kind of graduate and go to grade seven. If things, the way things stand right now, he would likely go to Longfellow unless we change boundaries, and then he might end up going to Cooper. And so my concern, I have kind of three primary kind of things that I wanted to address. So I've heard from many kind of parents that there are some long-term impacts and short-term impacts, and the data is kind of not really clear, and things are kind of in flux, and you really don't know how many kids are going to come back, to which school, and how am I going to continue kind of outside of the FCPA school system. So my concern is more to do with like the impact that this has on kids. Right now, I see my kids really don't have much of a social kind of friends, and they're not really able to go out and socialize and play out, right? So it's been a tough year for them, and so I feel like a kind of, and we are now contemplating making changes on them, and whenever you make changes, there's kind of, it's a multiplier effect on kids and on everyone else. Will the logistics work out right? I'm sure some things have to be figured out. School buses, cafeteria space, new classes, new teachers, I don't know whatnot, right? But once you combine this uncertainty that we are having because of the pandemic, along with the school kind of boundary changes all being considered at the same time, I feel like our kids are being thrown into a situation where they are being treated like guinea pigs. They're like, I would kind of think that, hey, can we not deal things with the one thing at a time? Allow kids to come back first and then address these issues. Second, I know that my kid has friends in the neighborhood, many of them go right now to kind of, all the seventh graders go to Longfellow. And so I was kind of looking forward to kind of right after pandemic, once they start going back to school, to have, for him to have friends kind of, who will kind of guide him and kind of help him into kind of get into middle school. Again, this has been a tough year, and so not really kind of the year where I would want to see a lot of things kind of being, kind of being in flux. And the third concern is that, so one of the reasons we moved here is because of the kind of the tier, the pyramid that we go into. My kid is very kind of, and this is kind of my personal, not just my personal concern, but there, I know, I've talked to other parents nearby who have something similar kind of concerns. So we are kind of, my kid is very interested in science and maths, and he is kind of, and so we volunteer, and we engage in things like science Olympiad and kind of math count and other activities along with.
Thank you. The speaker's time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Dana Wu. Dana Wu, I don't see them signed up. Ms. Tolan, that was our final speaker.
Thank you, Ms. Feldberg, for calling all of those names. Really appreciate your assistance this evening. And again, thank you to my board colleagues that are here and our leadership team and to our speakers. Thank you for virtually attending today's public hearing and for sharing all of your comments and concerns. This is exactly the kind of feedback that we need to hear as we move forward with this boundary adjustment. And the board will vote on the McLean-Langley High School and Longfellow-Cooper Middle School boundary at February 4 regular meeting next week. Thank you very much. This hearing is adjourned.